We'll do a roll call, Mr. Stenbridge.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Present.
Ms. Panado.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
All right, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will begin with the hearing scheduled for 11:00 AM. We have, first we have case BOA 15364.
Mr. Stenbridge, I'm sorry, could we request any deferals?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can, Javier. As reminded, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, good morning, it's Attorney Richard Lins, I have two matters requesting a referral.
Go right ahead, Attorney Lins.
Sure, the first one is on 98 Bennington Street, 98 100 Bennington Street, requesting a referral.
So, those would be four companion cases being one case BOA 1535335 with the address of 98 Bennington Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1535337 with the, also, also with the address of 98 Bennington Street. Go, go ahead and explain, Attorney Lins.
Thank you, this is Stenbridge, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, with respect to this proposal, it's our first request for a referral. We have reviewed the BPDA recommendation and we understand there is conversations about draft zoning for that neighborhood. We'd like to take a look at what the final decision is for draft zoning before we proceed with this, so we're requesting a referral of that.
How much time do you think you'll need?
Are we looking at January dates right now?
Javier?
Yes, yes, Richie, that's, that's the dates we're looking at right now.
Yep, January would be fine, thank you.
I would suggest January 23rd, I'm not sure of the draft of the neighborhood yet, so I think that just to be safe, January 23rd.
That's fine.
Well, that may have a motion?
Motion to defer to January 23rd.
2024, may I have second?
2024.
Second?
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, the second one, Mr. Stenbridge, is 1-5, Gordon Street, that is an Article 80 that is scheduled for 11:00 AM. However, there's a companion case that this goes with at 1:00 PM, and we're requesting that be heard together at 1:00. The Boston Planning Development Agency approved this as one Article 80 project, and we feel in the interest of completeness, it makes the most sense to hear that at 1:00 PM. So I'm asking for a referral to 1:00 PM for the 1-5.
Thank you, Mr. Lins, I would agree, is there a motion?
Motion to extend until 1:00 PM to a.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, we'll see you in the audience.
Hearing no other requests, we will return to case BOA 1536404 with the address of 21 Wallingford Road. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes, I am.
Oh, go ahead. Okay, please proceed.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and all the board members. My name is Frank Williams, I'm currently the owner of 21 Wallingford Road. And Wallingford Road is currently a two-family home that I'm looking to convert to a three-family. The makeup of, of the property itself is a, it's a, it's a row house. And it's connected to 49 other row houses that make up Leamington, Wallingford, and Commonwealth Avenue. The, the house has, the house has always been used in the past as a three-family. There are, there are two means of egress for, for all three apartments. For some reason, the past owners, I've been the owner of it for a year now. And it's currently vacant and is under construction, and it's been, we had to bring it up to code for the city. So the, so one of the things I'm looking to do is just really legalize it and, and do the necessary things to, to bring it into a three-family house. I currently have three, three violations that are insufficient lot area, insufficient additional lot area in parking. Currently, the, the building does have two parking spaces that are off-street that are dedicated to parking. There, it is a corner building, so it does have a yard that's a little, little larger than most for a row house. So we do have outdoor space, there is a patio outdoors for the, for the basement apartment, for the lower-level apartment. And all the other apartments will have means of deck, decks running off of the fire escape. So that people are able to, to access the rear or the side of the building via, via deck onto a, onto a fire escape. And I think, you know, pretty much that, that really sums it up, it's, it's definitely in a transit-oriented area. There's the B-line, the C-line, and the D-line that actually are only five to 10 minutes away from this particular property.
Thank you, any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, the recommendation from the BPDA makes note of that the applicant doesn't have existing floor plans showing the three units, but I see the plans in front of me, so I just want to make note of that.
Okay, and any questions about those plans?
No.
Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Frank Mendoza, I'm a bright liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. For 21 Wallingford Road, we had a butters meeting on August 22nd with very few attendees. We did record some support based on the applicant's record as a landlord. The Brighton Nelson Improvements Association did receive a presentation from this applicant, their zoning chair and a Melo Gollum should be on to testify as to their stance. We don't have any letters of support or opposition for this project, and we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mendoza.
Okay. Just, no other elected officials, I'll, I'll give it to Allison. Can you briefly state your name and address and tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Good morning, my name is Allison Me. I, I own one of the row houses about 1757 Commonwealth Avenue. Happens, Mr. Williams owns each of the adjoining townhouses on either side of my building. And I have found him to be a responsible land, responsible and responsive owner. So if there are any concerns that I raise to him about our, the, the shared boundary, he, his, he's always available and able to speak with me, and we have always resolved things to our mutual satisfaction. I'd also like to know if Mr. Williams has any thought for structuring rent around the, the different ratio of apartment or dwellings to parking stations in particular, because I know he has two, a nice pad for parking for two. And I wonder if, had any thought for offering a different rent for someone who doesn't have a car or?
Okay, well, thank, thank you, Ms. Muir. Any other raised hands?
On the panelist side, that was, oh no, that's, yeah, board.
Okay, any other, any other questions from the board? If you'd like to address that, Mr. Williams, feel free, but that's not within our purview, so.
I, I can talk with Allison privately.
Offline, thank you, okay, is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the applicant submits an existing floor plan for the second floor, and if there's any renovations on the second floor, to also submit the new floor plan.
To BPDA, okay.
To BPDA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
There are also votes yes, motion carries, good luck, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1520516 with the address of 36 Ellison Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the board?
Hi, if you're on, can you raise your hand, this proposal? Okay, someone just raised their hand, one second, okay, Timothy, gonna make you a panelist? You can discuss except when that pops up and then unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Roach, please proceed.
Hello, my name is Timothy Roach and I'm 36 Ellison Avenue and my wife. We have a variance on the property. We wanted to extend the back of the house 10 feet and add a deck. But there's a variance on the side of the property that's for six and a half feet, I mean for 10 feet, and we only have six and a half feet. I think the variance was changed in 1970.
Okay.
Also, my builder's on this call too.
Okay, are there questions from the board?
Yes, are you also extending the driveway or not?
The driveway?
Yes.
Yes.
We're not extending the driveway.
Okay.
We're not extending, we're extending the house straight back to the existing house along the exist.
Thank you, other questions from the board? Okay, hearing them, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, every change of the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for 36 Ellison Ave had a butters meeting on October 11, 2023. They met with the Lower Mill Civic Association and the Greater, Greater Manhattan Neighborhood Council, both issuing letters of support. We've also received 11 total letters of support, zero letters of opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer our judgment to the board on this matter, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and at this time, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'm sure I make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Ms. Panado. You're on mute, Ms. Panado?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion Article 80 cases. The first is case BOA 1536060 with the address of 310 Northern Avenue. Along with that, we have case BOA 1536080 with the address of 5 FID Kennedy Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna say to the applicant, we have like four more Article 80 projects, so please, please do be efficient, thank you.
Good morning, did you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you, Madam Secretary and members of the board. My name is Danielle Blake, and I'm pleased to be here today representing Marcus Partners. We're an affiliate of the project proponent with a business address of 201 Washington Street, Suite 2100 in downtown Boston. Joining me here today is John Sullivan from SGA, the Architect of Record, and Jeff Howell and Matt Fitzgerald, the project attorneys from DOA. Next slide, please, the project consists of two buildings with the addresses of 310 Northern Avenue and 5 FID Kennedy Avenue. The project site is one parcel measuring approximately 183,000 square feet, known as Parcel X in the Raymond Allen Flynn Marine Park. The project is located within the General Industrial Sub District I-2 of South Boston, and is governed by the underlying base provisions of the Boston Zoning Code. But it is also located within a restricted parking overlay district and the coastal flood resilience overlay district. The proposed uses we are discussing here today are permitted by right, however, there are four points of zoning relief. We do need including a variance to allow the FAR requested by the city and approved by the state for this parcel in the Raymond Allen Flynn Marine Park Master Plan Update. Additionally, a variance from the minimum parapet setback requirement, as well as a conditional use permit for the accessory parking garage because it's in a restricted parking district, and a conditional use permit for the parking garage within the restricted parking overlay district. Next slide, please. The project site is owned by the Economic Development Industrial Corporation of Boston. It's currently improved by two buildings totaling approximately 72,000 square feet, which is home to the New Boston Seafood Center pursuant to a ground lease with the EDIC. We have entered into an agreement with the New Boston Seafood Center to acquire that existing ground lease and to relocate two seafood companies located at the property to a new processing facility near the project site. We've also entered into an agreement with the EDIC to acquire and restate the ground lease upon the satisfaction of certain conditions, including permitting. Next slide, please. The project consists of demolishing the existing buildings and constructing two new life science R&amp;D buildings, known as 310 Northern and 5 FID Kennedy Avenue, collectively totaling approximately 742,000 square feet, consistent with the master plan update. While the majority of our project will be life science R&amp;D use, we do have the option for our new ground lease with the EDIC to have no more than 3% of our building area as nondestination retail, which is to support the Marine Park tenants. 310 Northern is the larger of the two buildings, it's seven stories and approximately 456,000 square feet. 5 FID Kennedy is six stories and approximately 286,000 square feet. Also, excited to say that our site plan includes approximately 50,000 square feet of public realm for public enjoyment by the Marine Park tenants. We've also identified an area on the site for truck turns associated with our neighbor's intensive loading operations, located directly to the west of us at Harpoon and John Nagel. And we're planning for approximately 315 new parking spaces and garages below the buildings. The project was previously subject to review and approval of the BPDA under Article 80 and NEPA review and approval. I'm gonna ask John Sullivan from SGA just to quickly describe a couple more project details. John?
Thanks, Danielle, this is John Sullivan from, from SGA, we're the architect for the, for the project. The, the two sheets that may be the most helpful to talk to would be the site plan, as, as well as the, the building sections, if they're available. You know, discussing the, the site approach, I, I think kind of the points to make are, is that, you know, we're very, very responsive to, you know, the industrial nature of the neighborhood and what's happening along Seafood Way and FID Kennedy Avenue, and, and have really worked hard to, you know, modify our building and to create a streetscapes that is, you know, really respects the, the truck travel and supports those businesses. That said, our public realm, you know, offerings are organized more around Northern Avenue and the unnamed access road to the east, where we have a pocket park, a courtyard, and a, and a really nice kind of pedestrian experience for both buildings. 310 Northern Avenue is a seven-story building that fronts on Northern Avenue. It is 138 feet in height, it's raised three feet above the, above the grade for resiliency purposes. And the average, or the typical floor-to-floor height is 14 foot 6. The front door is kind of on the, on the center of the Northern Avenue block, there's also access from the courtyard. 5 FID Kennedy Avenue is as similar as an L-shaped building that, that faces FID Kennedy Avenue at six levels. Also raised for resiliency purposes to the same datum, and also has the same floor-to-floor heights, but it's a little bit lower in, in total height at 133 feet. So, a little, a little bit about the buildings and how they, how they sit on the site. Again, the upper levels are meant for R&amp;D purposes, and there's one level of parking that, that sits beneath both buildings in, in the public realm. Danielle?
Yeah, and I would just say, John was speaking to the plans that were part of our refusal package. But I'll just end with the project benefits, which, you know, this project's gonna provide employment opportunities during construction and upon construction. We're going to provide significant contributions to support the creation of affordable housing and workforce training programs. We're also, you know, contributing to the City of Boston tax base and ground revenue that can be used to help fund millions of dollars in infrastructure needed to support the port uses. We're, we are gonna meet the city's net-zero carbon targets. As I mentioned, we're protecting the needs of our industrial neighbors who've been operating successfully in the park for years. We're gonna contribute over $3 million towards the city's transportation mitigation fund to implement transportation improvement projects identified by the master plan update. And we are investing in a new seafood facility for the sellers who want to continue to grow their business, as the new Boston seafood facility that exists today is showing its age and has limitations that are cost-prohibited for the sellers to upgrade. That does conclude our presentation, thank you.
Thank you, any questions from the board?
Have you guys selected a general contractor yet?
We are currently working with John Moriarty and Associates for pre-construction services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a, a potential tenant for the life science and research spaces?
Oh, we would love to say yes. Right now, we do not.
Okay, do you know what level, what, what type of hazard is, if any, or bio?
Yeah, sure, so I think, you know, we're planning for, you know, biosafety level two. But again, I, I don't know specifically who the tenant's going to be, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
I see the BPDA hand raised, are you the project manager? Mr. Polanco?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Secretary, Daniel Polanco, project manager of the BPDA. We held a public hearing for this project on November 17th of 2022, and received full board approval for the BPDA. With this information, Madam Chair, members of the board, I just wanted to know that they did receive full support from our board members, thank you.
Thank you. I see someone from the mayor's office, that's not Connor, do you wanna speak?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lydia Klaske with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. 310 Northern Ave, 5 FID Kennedy Ave was a BPDA project, and I went through their committee process, as you heard. We have received no letters of support or opposition. ONS is unaware of any concerns at this time, we would like to defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support. This project will create approximately 3,400 jobs and help revitalize the area. The counselor believes that this project will be a valuable addition to the district, and the proponent has conducted a good community process. The counselor respectfully requests that the zoning board provide reconsideration to this proposal, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solomon for City Council, Lodge Michael Flaherty, acting as the sentiments, Council President Flynn's office, Council Board, government support, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Professor S. represent in the Carpenters Union. On behalf of hundreds of union carpenters that live and work throughout Boston, I want to go on record and support this project.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands?
Yep, I'm sorry, Danielle, are you looking to get testimony here, your hand is raised?
She's the applicant.
Was the applicant, okay, no, no additional raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
No.
I can make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge? Are, are you muted, Mr. Stenbridge?
I, I, I was, Madam Chair, but again, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1506316 with the address of 1 Morton Place. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the board?
Can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? Maria, it's a ballada, it's a border. You won't see them on.
Then, okay, um. We can ask, we can ask again, Madam Chair, but the next.
A hand was raised, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do you see it, Jessica? I don't see anything else.
Joe was a guest, under Joe Consalvo.
Joe.
Joe, are you on for this proposal, you've been unmuted.
Ah, yes, I am muted.
Are you here for 1 Morton Place?
Yes, and Bob G, the owner, should be on as well. But until he joins in, um.
Can you introduce yourself and proceed?
He's being transitioned to a panelist, Madam Chair, so he can see everything.
Excellent, thank you.
Joe, we can hear you now, you're a panelist now. Joe, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'm gonna try to unmute my side as well, but. It's not a long meter, he has, he has to do it on his side.
Mr. Consalvo, you can go ahead and unmute on your end.
Okay, I am muted.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, so what, the contractor that was hired is listed as the applicant, but abandoned the project without a permit, the building department shut it down. As a friend of Bob, I stepped in and got a survey plan and, and the drawings, and as you can see.
I'm sorry, sir, can you also just introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe Consalvo, Union Construction Inc., 647 Boylson Street, Boston.
Thank you, please proceed.
So the, the dormers were left open to the weather in total disrepair. The building department granted him permission to temporarily top them. And once the applications was, were filed, the refusal letter was issued because of the existing non-conforming zoning of this. of this very small lot. And we're just hoping to have the variance granted so I can send in some carpenters to put this house back together.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Also, Bob did speak with the, the local neighborhood groups and they were in support of him cleaning up his property.
Thank you, and hopefully we'll hear from ONS on that. Is there any?
Uh, he was on twenty minutes ago. I don't know where he went, um.
Jessica, is there any public testimony?
Hi.
Right stands.
Hi, Malia Gomez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Service. The applicant met with Eagle Hill Civic Association in October. The group voted unanimously to support the project. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
So that's. Just made him a panelist, so it might take him a second.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Pire from Council of Police Office. And so as Mel mentioned, and the applicant met with Eagle Hill and the committee voted in support unanimously. And the council has also spoken with the owner of this project. And so the council would like to go on record and support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have no additional raised hands? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Sure, also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
For the next three cases, um, the first, first of those three was deferred until January twenty-third. And the first, next two, which are companion cases for ninety-eight Bennett Street. And then, uh, for one five, one to five, Boardman Street has been deferred until one o'clock hour. So with that, we will move on to the re-discussions, scheduled for eleven-thirty. And first, we have case BOA one two four two six eight zero with the address of one seventy-one Quarry Road. Is the applicant and the one they're representative present to explain to the board?
Yes, thank you. Cameron Merrill, on behalf of the applicant. I believe the designer Rafi Segal and owners Nathan and Nicholas, Nathan, Nicholas Corsano are also on the Zoom, please. Just want to confirm they've been promoted.
I promoted Nicholas, Madam Chair.
Please proceed.
And is Rafi Segal promoted?
Uh, I'll promote him right now.
Okay, great, thank you. So thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Cameron Merrill, business address one hundredth State Street, Boston, Massachusetts. This is a project which is at the intersection of Quarry Road and Washington Street. As you leave Brookline and enter Brighton, as you proceed down Washington Street, this project has been a long time coming. It was applied for over a year and a half ago and there's been a robust community process. This project is within the Washington Street Neighborhood Shopping District, Sub-District, and it is proximate to the five Washington project, the Whole Foods project directly across the street and the abutting property upheld from this project, which recently burned down, likely will be redeveloped in some fashion in the near future. So needless to say, this is an area of Boston which is currently undergoing a significant transition. And my clients are artists. They are award-winning artists with connections to Boston schools and Boston's artist community. And originally, they occupied what you can see in that photograph, a cinder block garage, which is presently there, as their artist studio. And their dream was to make this somewhere the artists could live and could work and contribute to a robust artist community. However, as we've all seen in the news lately, there's been a decline in some of those artists' opportunities. And based upon that news and their own personal experiences, they wanted to contribute in a way that could allow that community to flourish with a thriving pedestrian-focused, artist-focused building. And that's why we have this project before you today. After numerous conversations and meetings and groups with the civic associations, this project was reduced from nine to six units. Parking was added to the front of the building, which will be transient parking during the daytime, overnight parking in the evening. Several considerations were made for bicycle parking, indoor bicycle parking, indoor storage of trash and refuse. There were also streetscape improvements that were added, which Rafi will tell you all about. But I, and I think that, I don't want to take the words out of the councilor's mouth or self, but I do believe we have Council of Bearden support for this project. And in whole, the, the effort here was to match and contribute to the developments which are downhill and across the street without overburdening the community. And we believe that we've done that with this project as it's been designed. So that being said, if Rafi can take over and take you through some of the plans or answer any questions you might have, I think that would be a program.
Thank you, Cameron. I'm here, but I'm not controlling the slides. So if we can go through the slides, right. Uh, the existing survey, right, next slide, are proposed where we are shortening our lot in order to expand sidewalk area to manage Washington five. Next. And we'll see in more detail the various iterations that have happened since the previous submission, which is the additional parking, as Cameron described, two means of egress. Next. Yes. The ground level is primarily devoted in a way to public benefits, commercial space at the front, past the two parking lots, which get a twenty-foot setback, bike parking at the entrance, entrance ramp to the, to the entrance of the building, which is ADA compliant, and an art space in the back. Contemporary art space used by the artists also for various neighborhood meetings. On the basement level, we, based on comments, we enclose the trash and recycling in a closed room. And also, there's additional storage in the mechanical room on the basement. The garden at the back is made accessible and open. Previously, there was a staircase there. We pushed that back, so we're in compliance with a twenty-foot setback in the back. Next. So the second floor of the building is all devoted to artist spaces, commercial spaces, and it engages also, as you will see in the facade, with the street. This is really part of the design, trying to make the most out of this very problematic and narrow site. So the first two floors are all devoted to the art component and the kind of the artist units. The third, fourth, and fifth floor are a combination of different sizes, total of six units, where the fourth and fifth floor have duplex units. Next. The other component is the facade where we created these setbacks that allow for planters, three-foot setbacks. So the planting is kind of happening within the facade and it's, it's something, you know, that will be enjoyed both by tenants and by, by the neighbors, obviously. But it's an attempt to integrate a kind of a green facade into the actual structure of the building. Other changes include the solar panels on the roof. Next. And in, towards Quarry Road, the kind of the more transparent condition of the two first levels that are artist-based spaces that will allow this kind of engagement. So as Cameron mentioned, the whole area is undergoing a significant transition as a public, as a business kind of district, neighborhood business district. And it does need an art component. And this is the art component within the larger kind of urban, urban condition.
Mr. Segal, can you, can you also talk about the violations and how, how your project relates to them?
Right. So in terms of height, we're matching, we're a bit under Washington five, which is our neighbor. For, in terms of the street facade and street action, it kind of works with that. You see the kind of situation as of now, which is a kind of a, a very small shack next to it. So we're matching the height, more or less, but we're, we're a bit under. In terms of the parking, the whole approach here is, is to create a project around walkability and pedestrian access and bike access. So we're offering fourteen bike spots to park in and two, and maintaining the two existing car parks. But overall, the, the, you know, connection to mass transit, it's, it's a very walkable neighborhood. It's part of the business sub-district language, you know, to promote, promote walkability and pedestrian access. So that explains the parking. And also, the site is enormously narrow and extremely difficult to create additional parking on it, especially with a, with a rock in the middle of it. The units, you know, we, as Cameron mentioned, we moved to six units and three artist commercial spaces. These are the main, the main points that, that we're kind of addressing in terms of. And obviously, the FAR, which reflects, you know, the height and the, and the need for those units to also support the artist space.
Are there questions from the board?
Are, are you going to leave the existing curb cut? To allow for the two, for the two parking spaces to exist?
Well, it needs to be redone, obviously, to match the sidewalk.
But you're not, right. You're not going to widen it. You're going to, as it is.
We're not widening it.
Okay, so, um, uh, if, if, if the chair can read the BPDA recommendation, that would be great.
Approval with provisos that plan be submitted to, to BPDA for design review with attention to adding a setback to the fifth floor and ensuring the design is respectful of the neighborhood context.
Okay, so, um, I, I just want to make a comment to, to the board. It's, it's a very small site. It's very narrow. It's about, right here, I'm reading about thirty-two feet, let's say, wide. I don't necessarily understand the setback of the fifth floor. The building, there, the context, there's really almost no context. Or there's variations of different topologies in the context. And the building next to it is a fairly new construction building, which is a very large, much longer kind of facade. And I can understand why there's a setback in that larger mass building on the fifth floor because the facade is so wide. But this is the only, the, the recommendation of the BPDA to set that back. I, I don't necessarily agree with. But I just wanted to kind of have that as an open conversation to, to the board members.
Can, can you go back to the image, to the rendered images? We can see the building next door?
Yeah, so that's what I was just commenting, that that building is very, is very large and typically setbacks on the fifth floor. You know, it's just to break down the scale. I don't necessarily understand why it was a comment towards your, your project. And so I'm just making kind of that as observation urbanistically. And then to be respectful of the context, again, the context is fairly new with the building to the right. So I don't understand why we would be following that new building to the right. If there's any context, we're looking at really residential kind of topologies around, around, around the neighborhood. But it is next to very large apartment blocks with flat roofs, all the way, almost as an extrusion block. So I'm just making some observations from my colleagues.
Any other questions?
No further comment, no further comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Segal? Mr. Segal, initially you had nine units. Now you have six, correct?
Yes.
Can you tell us what are the reasons why you reduced the unit count from, from nine to six?
Yes, so we, we had a robust community discussion and it was in large part based upon the community's desire to have less units, but also to have bigger units. So we did not dramatically decrease the size of the building, but we did allow for certain larger units to include some family-style living within this building, which was a direct request from, I believe, the civic association and the Butters, as well as the councilor's office. There's also a space which is going to be retained by this ownership group to be an artist in residence that will be able to present in some of the artist space within this building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Austin Brighton Liaison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. For one seventy-one Quarry Hill, we had a Butters meeting on April the twenty-seventh. We had a Butters present who had concerns based on density, parking, the overall size of the building, as well as a corner abutting lot. We had some non-abutting attendees who did attend and expressed support based on the creation of art space. They did present with the civic association. The zoning chair of the BAI could be on to testify to their stance after me. We have not received any letters of support or opposition for this project and we would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Maura Creed from Councilor Braden's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project. She appreci, she appreciates the, the proposed use of the project, the arts use, which has been increasingly difficult to find and retain in this neighborhood. She appreciates the current proposed design. Just to add a bit more context, the building that's immediately adjacent, one eighty-five Quarry, which I believe was mentioned briefly, it burned down, but that was a building where there was artist use, music studios, dance studios. So this was a, art use was, is something that has been missed in this neighborhood, in this particular neighborhood. So we are really appreciative that this project is bringing that back to this corner of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Annavella?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annavella Goams from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. Like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. No, no record in support.
Matthew, and then Felicity?
Hi, yes, I'm a new member of the arts community in Boston and I see space as a premium here, even space availability for the creative sector. And as they've already mentioned above, that, that there, there are losing space. And people are attracted to cities not by the office space available, but by the arts and cultural scenes and opportunities. This mixed-use space is desperately needed in this area. So I, I, testimony and support.
Thank you. Do you have an address?
Fifty Green Street in Brookline.
Thank you. Felicity?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Felicity Salmon. I reside at one twenty-seven Whittington Road in Newton, but I work as a freelance musician and an arts administrator in Boston. And I, I can tell you firsthand that we are, yeah, there's a massive need for arts-focused, mixed-use developments such as this. And I just wanted to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
First, Jen, are you looking to get testimony? Are you unmuted? Okay, you have some connectivity issues. I have no additional raised hands. Okay. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Wait, about the incident?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion forward. This is a very admirable project with much-needed commercial spaces for, for Brighton. I would like to put a motion of approval with a proviso that.
I'm sorry, thank you. Please proceed.
Just with the only proviso that the curb cut dimension remains, that is not, is not, remains the same, that it's not enlarged. remains the same, that it's not enlarged.
Yes.
Is there a second? Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barza?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you. Thanks.
Next, we have case BOA 1199457 with the address of 29 Sutherland Road. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the owner of the property, Yehudah Galani. Also here today is Gary Hendren, who is the project architect. This is a proposed three-unit addition to an existing structure at the corner of Englewood and Sutherland Road in Brighton. It is located in the Aberdeen Historic District and much care has been given to making the addition not only consistent with the existing structure, but compliant with the Aberdeen Historic Guidelines, such that we have engaged a, an advisory review and made substantial changes to the project as it went through the review process in response to suggestions by Aberdeen Historic staff, although we can't go back to them until we had exhausted this process, but wanted the board to know that we've worked closely with them because of the historic nature of this area. You'll see on the right-hand side of this screen, the blacked-out portion in the middle of the screen is the existing parcel. Right next door is a twenty-two-unit building. Across the street is a twenty-six-unit building. And then diagonally across the street, that large sort of U-shaped building is a large seniors center. So it is definitely clustered around very large multifamily-type residential units, even though it is technically in the 3F sub-district. So again, the proposal is to construct a modest three-story addition on only one side of the building, which you'll see in the elevations that Gary will explain to you. That will change the occupancy from four units to seven units and provide three additional dwelling units for this property. Back in 2006, this board approved the one additional unit, changing the occupancy from three to four. So it presently has a legal occupancy of four units as approved by this board in 2006 and pursuant to a certificate of occupancy. Those four units, as you'll see on the floor plans, include two duplex units that have living space in the basement. There were some questions we received during the process about the basement units. They're not units. They're living area for the existing units in the building and all were part of the approved unit layout back in 2006. I just was reviewing the zoning board appeal decision from 2006 and it makes reference to the duplex-style units with space in the garden level. So those are existing, no change to those. And with respect to the three-story addition on the one side of the building, which will contain the three new units, there's no, there's no basement space for that. It's slab-on-grade. Importantly also, although we're adding square footage and footprint to this building, it's a 9,300-square-foot lot on a corner. So it has lots of breathing room on all sides. Even with the addition, it will have 66% of the lot area will be open. There's a large front lawn. There's a side lawn. There's a side yard area. And there's parking, existing parking in the rear. Again, there's, six spaces had been previously approved by this board as part of the 2006 decision. And the site plan shows seven spaces for the seven units, which is a one-to-one ratio. But again, even with the addition and the existing parking, 66% of the lot area is open space. I think I'll turn it over to Gary to run through the floor plans and show you the proposed elevation on additions. But there it is on the left-hand side of your screen, the proposed three-unit addition. There's a line down the middle and that is the existing building. And you can see the front area on Sutherland and along Englewood is, remains open. And the parking is at the back of the building to be accessed by the existing curb cut on Englewood Ave. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gary to talk about the floor plans and elevations.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, members of the board. My name is Gary Hendren. I'm with Hendren Associates here in Brighton Alston area. On this particular building, we've, as you will see in the elevations, we've made a lot of effort to match the existing architecture, the line of the roof, the style of the, of the addition. What we have done is, again, away from the corner of the lot on the proposed three units, that was a three-season porch with a deck on top. So we have not taken away from the four units that existed, but we've added the three units. Could we go to the next slide, please? Okay. This is the existing site plan and this is the at-grade. So the, the first floor, as you can see by the steps along Sutherland Road, you come up about a half a level. So the, the darkened units on the right are existing apartments. The one on the left is the new apartment. Each apartment does have two means of egress. We've made them adequately sized with large closets. And like I say, we have not exceeded the floor area ratio of the site itself. We do match that by zoning requirements. Next floor, please. Okay. On the, okay. Again, the basement, that's an existing basement floor plan. Next slide. And this is the one we just talked about, the two units and the existing building remained. We had one two-bedroom unit at the first floor. Next slide. As you go up, the, on the second floor, we've added another three-bedroom unit. So we've taken over, the second means of egress stair was, been removed and pushed to the outside of the building for access to all the new units. And by doing that, we're able to add a bedroom inside of the existing building, which makes the second floor a three-bedroom unit. So we have a family unit. On the third floor, through the review process, we originally had a larger unit, but in order to, to maintain the existing roof line, that has been reduced to a one-bedroom unit, so that part of it's in the overhang. We can go to the elevations. And that's the existing elevation. You can see to the right of the building is that, that porch and with the decks that have been replaced by the units. Next slide. And that's just from the, from the rear side, same sort of condition. Next slide, please. I'm afraid you've got the old. These are not the current slides because on the front, that roof line, as you can see, originally we had a three, three decks, but on the right side, that top floor has been made to match the roof line so the buildings do match with the continuation of the architecture. Is there a more current set?
No, that was the set that we submitted, Gary. But for.
That's not, that's not the recent.
But, but for the roof line, everything else remains the same. And that was the design change, right?
That's correct. And then we were requested just to, there was a comment maybe to enclose that rear stair, which is, we're willing to do. That's not a problem. It was originally a covered staircase that would become an enclosed staircase.
Yeah. And Madam Chair, he's referring to our vote of support that we received from the BAI A included their request, that we request a proviso from this board in the event of approval, that the rear access stairway shown here on the elevation be enclosed and we would agree to do that.
The other thing we'd like to mention, we do have 16 letters of support from the Butters. They have no opposition to this project.
Any questions from the board?
Yes. How many parking spaces do you currently have?
Seven.
Seven? So there's no change in terms of addition that you're requesting?
Right. I, I believe that the maneuverability citation is because you can see the configuration shows a tandem arrangement, but the current occupants of this structure largely park sort of along the property line there. So they're, they're, they rarely implement the tandem arrangement. But the proposed, as shown on the site plan, is the six, you know, three tandem spaces and then that one additional, so seven. So no, no change, no addition to the parking, no additional paving to create parking surface, just status quo.
Right. But you were slated for all-street, oh, parking, that's right, for maneuverability. Okay. And then is there a reason why you haven't considered an accessible unit on the ground floor?
There is no ground floor. The, the first floor of the building.
The first floor.
Is half a level up.
Right.
Right.
But is the, for your proposed addition, you, you could.
We could put a ramp in the front yard, maybe, to make it an accessible unit. And that's, I can see where that would be feasible. I can speak to the owner about doing that. So from my standpoint, from an architectural standpoint, it's certainly feasible to do that, given the size of the front porch.
Other questions from the board?
Given the amount of the paving on this site, are you open to doing a more permeable surface there for all that paving? And, and is there any landscaping anticipated?
There's, there's existing landscaping to remain. We haven't changed the paving at all in terms of the quantity of the asphalt. Again, we could take a proviso to make the, let's say, the parking spaces. We would have to obviously excavate the asphalt and put down permeable pavement to reduce the, the water runoff. So it's certainly feasible to do that. Little extra construction cost. But the rest of the, there's, unfortunately, the photos weren't part of the submission. There's quite a bit of landscaping on the existing lot, as well as a large tree in the front yard. And all that remains. We're not impacting any of the, let's say, trees. And the footprint is less, about 10 feet larger than the existing porches that are on that side of the house. So we've taken out a little bit of grass, but not much alteration to the landscape.
And, and Ms. Panado, the lot coverage is going from 28% of lot coverage to 34%. That's with respect to the building, so minor addition. But if you walk by on Sutherland Ave, as you turn that corner onto Englewood, the house, the existing structure is set back nicely and there's a beautiful front lawn with very mature bushes. This is an old, old structure.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. Thank you.
Just as a follow-up from, from that question, I see that there is, there is parking on the street and also the green line is in walking distance. So have you considered reducing the number of parking spaces to allow for more open space for the new residents?
Mr. Valencia, the, you know, so the prior decision of this board in 2006 approved six parking spaces for the then-four units. And then as part of, you know, the community review process, of course, parking in Austin Brighton is always a premium. So the request was for a one-to-one ratio. So effectively, that's just adding one more space without needing to increase the existing paved area of the parcel. It's always, as, as we know and you know, it's a give and take, but we're effectively only adding the one space for the three additional units.
Thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Austin Brighton Liaison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. For 29 Sutherland Road, we hosted in a Butters meeting on January the 19th. It was not very well attended. We had one attendee who was not a direct abutter, didn't express any concerns, but did have some questions that the applicant was able to answer. We did get the 16 letters of support that the applicant spoke about. We haven't gotten any letters of opposition regarding the project, although we did get one letter from a resident of Cleveland Circle concerned about the historic nature of the building and the relevancy of the Aberdeen Conservation Design District. Beyond that, the Brighton Alston Proven Association zoning chair should be on to testify to their stance after myself and we would like to defer to the judgment of the board in this matter at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Maura Craig from Counselor Braden's office. Counselor would like to go on record of support, uh, go on record in support of this project. She would like to request that the board consider proviso that would require some sort of permeable paving for the driveway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Proven Association. We'd like to go on record in support with the proviso that the second means of egress is enclosed and not open, as they have agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lieutenant Michael Flaherty. The report is void.
Okay. I have no additional raised hands. Thank you.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll give this a try. I would like to put forward a motion of approval with provisos. One, that it, that the project undergoes BPD A design review for site planning to review the maneuverability of the parking layout. Two, that the applicant provides permeable pavement. Three, that the second means of egress is enclosed. And fourth, that there'll be accessibility code review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge? You're on mute again, sir.
I apologize, Madam Chair. I'm writing all the provisos. Sorry.
No worries. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barza?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Next, we have two companion cases. First is case BOA 1309386 with the address of 75 Maywood Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1538154 with the address of 74 to 76 Seventh Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to point to the board?
Hi Fred, are you on? Oh, I see. Hold on. I'm going to make you a panelist. You can just press accept once that pulls up. Okay. And it's going to temporarily mute you. So if you can just unmute yourself again when you become panelist. Thank you. Hi Fred, can you hear us?
Yeah, I was muted for a reason. So I think I unmuted myself. You should be able to hear me now.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. My name is Fred Manning. I'm an architect. I've been working with my client, Pitt and Western, for a while on this project. We were in front of the board, I think, last time and the project's been deferred a couple of times because we needed to, to settle this issue with the, with the, with the, with the accompanying lot where we are, we are subdividing the lot a little bit just to provide additional parking for the new proposed building. And I guess we'll talk about that, that application after this one. So this proposal right now that you are seeing is for a six-unit building on, on Maywood. uh, on, on Maywood Street, uh, this is a lot that is owned by, by a, by a neighbor who lives on the same street, uh, what we're proposing is, is, is six units, where we'll have a small studio unit in the, in the, in the, in the ground floor, and a, a two-bedroom unit on the first floor, then we'll have, uh, uh, if, if you go to the next slide, we'll see that, on the, on the, on the second and third floor, we'll have two, uh, a, two two-bedrooms on, on each one of those floors with two baths. We've been cited by, by the board for, for, uh, for, for high restriction, uh, floor area ratio, uh, insufficient, insufficient front yard and insufficient side yard. Uh, we, we've had meetings with the community, there are, there was a time where we're showing roof decks, uh, the community did not appreciate that, so we removed that, we were, we were providing fewer parking spaces, we also achieved to, to, to accommodate the community concern, and we, so we are providing, uh, one-to-one parking, uh, the, 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 the roof height is maybe slightly about a foot or two higher than the, than, than the, what is, uh, the adjacent building, but we are providing, uh, an architecture that would take compliments of what's already there, we're providing, uh, handicap accessibility on the first floor, uh, we, we're using materials that is comparable with the neighborhood buildings, uh, I think it's a, it's a, it's a project that has been on the board for quite a bit, we've had meetings with the community, we had meeting with the, with the, uh, neighborhood associations, I think it's all, it's all been well received, uh, the, 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 the Mayor's Office and uh, City Council's Office have also been briefed on this project, so, so this is, this is basically what it is, it's a, it's a, it's a six-unit building, uh, on an empty lot that has been vacant for quite a bit, and, and, um, we're meeting idle, and, and that will just fill in a missing tooth, I feel, on the street, and, uh, and, and, and brings much-needed housing, uh, for, for the community.
Other questions from the board? Thank you.
Um, did you consider something smaller that doesn't take up sort of, it looks like almost the entirety of the lot, uh, which is now a vacant lot, with, with the fair amount of mature trees? And so I'm just curious why such a development that encompasses the entire lot?
So, so if, uh, so the way we, I don't know if this explains it well, uh, on the ground floor, uh, footprint is small on the ground floor, then when we get to the second floor, that's when it's elevated, so you, you, you'll have quite a bit of space underneath the building, if you can see, this, this, this is the extent of the, of the footprint on the actual, on the, actually on the ground, then when, then when you get to the second floor, that's where it's gonna, it can deliver it over, to, to allow for the parking, and, 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 and so it will not feel as, as congested as you may, uh, you may envision, because, uh, the, the actual footprint on the ground itself is smaller than-
But, but it looks like the remaining area of the lot is all paved, like there's no-
Yeah, so-
Significant green space.
But, yeah, so we, we, we had this competing interest between what we were showing earlier that had a little bit more green space and what, what we're showing right now that has more parking, I mean, we would be willing to, to reduce the number of parking, uh, if that was a proviso recommended to us, another for us to provide more green space, I mean, the attempt was trying to, uh, to provide one-to-one parking, but this is a, this is an area that is in a, in a very well-serve public transportation, uh, bus line, so we could, I can envision, the, the owner, uh, it would be, I think would be willing to reduce the number of parking and provide more green space on the site, you know, and, and, I mean, I can envision us providing four parking, first come, first served basis, and, 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 and using the remaining of the site to buy for more green space and, and shops and trees, the like, so this certainly would be acceptable to this kind of-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Can you, um, please let us know, what is the proposed curb cut dimension, and then the other is, um, uh, the side yard, um, what's your side yard dimension?
Okay, uh, so the curb cut, the curb cut dimension is going to be, uh, the typical curb cut required by BPDA, uh, we, we don't have a, I think we're showing it right now to be, uh, a little over eleven feet, but we, uh, we, we, we haven't done through the water BPDA process yet, but it will be, it will be, uh, it would be adequate, I, I believe, of, uh, for, for, for the cars to go in and, 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 and come out, it will be a new curb cut that will meet, that will meet, um, zoning, and I'm trying to look up the, the side yard right now, I think-
Right, it's just because you're dimensioned, you're not, the site plan is not dimensioned at all.
Okay, I mean, I can, I can figure it out very quickly if you, if you-
Looks like you have a ramp very close to the property, if I'm reading that correctly on the site plan?
Yeah, I have, I have a ramp, I know, if you're facing the building on the right side of it, you, you'll, you'll see a ramp, uh, that was, that was a, that was a request after meeting with, uh, with the community, and also with, with, uh, with, with, with the city, we, uh, plan with Giro that, that, that we provide, uh, handicaps, uh, parking, uh, and, I mean, I'm talking, uh, uh, accessible unit, so that's, that's why we, we decided to add that, that ramp on the side.
Right, but if you look at the site plan, and let's say you have an accessible, um, parking space, you can't even get to the accessible ramp?
I don't think my site is being shown, is there a way to show my, I'm looking at, look, I can just get the site when we're showing.
You cannot share, so you can just tell-
No, no, I'm saying that what I'm seeing here is not mine. Yeah, so if-
Yeah, that's the correct-
That's the, that's the problem, yeah.
Yeah, so if you can, if you can see here, if you can see here, that that ramp, it's not even, um, positioned where you can get from an accessible parking space.
Oh, I-
It answers back to it.
No, I, I, I think, I think you, you, you would be able to, I think I, what I'm, what I have a five-foot, I will, I, I've designed it to have a five-foot radius in front of the ramp from the parking, from the parking space, I think you may be concerned a little bit about the stairs encroaching a little bit, which I think we can, we can modify to make sure that, that's, that's a matter of making sure it meets code, I, I, I think we can make that work.
Okay, so you, you don't have adequate drawings to convince me that it can work, but that's okay, that'll-
No, yeah, we'll, we'll make it work, yeah.
But I see you're amenable, okay, thank you.
Yes, amenable, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question, Madam Chair, this is for the applicant, so this was deferred from a board meeting in September, can you sort of give a higher-level overview of what has changed since that meeting within the plans?
Yeah, so the, the reason it was deferred, um, it was, uh, it wasn't made because of the plan mainly, the, the reason it was deferred is because we needed to have an accompanying application for, for Seventh Street where we are doing the subdivision, because by subdividing the land where we are taking part of the Seventh Street lot in order to, to provide the parking space for Maywood, that also triggered a zoning violation for the existing lot, so they wanted us to also, uh, address that at the same time, so, so it was deferred for that reason.
So just to confirm, there are no actual changes to your plan, that's, that was her main question?
No, there are no actual changes, so-
Thank you, okay, okay.
And at that, at that time, did you, were you privy to the BPDA recommendation? And the feedback from the BPDA?
I don't think this has gone to the BPDA yet.
Well, we, we have a recommendation, um, from, for the board, and it sort of-
Which is public?
Yeah, and it, um, recommends a denial based on a number of, um, items, so I just wasn't sure if you had seen that and had taken that feedback into account before coming back, um, I'm happy to read it if anyone-
Yeah, I think we'll read it.
Um, so they recommended denial without prejudice, the proponent should explore a proposal that narrows the structure's massing to meet the area's side yard requirement, update should also relocate the proposed driveway off of the side lot line, and significantly reduce the amount of paving on the site to retain the site's landscape and existing trees, and provide adequate screening and buffering along the site's side and rear lot lines.
Thank you, with that, let's take public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, at this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information on the community process, um, and a butters meeting was held, I don't have a lot of information on that due to personnel changes, but understand there were concerns expressed with, uh, the upkeep of the, uh, adjacent property, uh, the applicant went on to meet several times with, uh, the civic association in that area, um, Project Wright and the Nine Street United Neighborhood Association, uh, decided on supporting this project on the condition that they do not include a roof deck as part of the proposal, um, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr.- One second, you gotta re, okay, Mike Cozoo?
Michael Cozoo, three-twenty, letter A, Blue Avenue, Project Wright, uh, we have been working with the home, uh, the property owner, uh, who actually lives in the neighborhood, the property that we were concerned about was a problem property from someone else, this neighbor, this applicant has been very helpful in addressing the problem property, uh, working with us, uh, to work with, um, the city addressing the other proper, problem property that's not, not, that's not his, uh, people felt that this property would be of value, we will continue to work, um, with the property owner in terms of making any adjustments that's needed, we appreciate them, um, addressing the lack of, the removal of the roof deck, also, we were concerned about, neighbors were concerned about the lack of off-street parking, uh, so they accommodated that, we are willing to work, uh, in terms of further, uh, we, uh, design re, review, uh, but we are conditionally supporting this project.
And have no additional raised hands at the moment. Thank you. Any other follow-up questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to, um, I think the density is good at the site, I'd like to support this project and put forth a motion of approval with BPDA design review as it relates to the massing of the building, the location of the building, um, the site plan, um, landscaping, to maintain existing trees, and to promote, um, a permeable, uh, surface, and lastly, to review the total amount of parking, to allow for open space.
Is there a second?
A second then.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-five-nine-zero-six-one with the address of seventy-four Horace Street, is the applicant and or their representative present, to explain to the board?
Yes, uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linds, two-forty-five Sutherland Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, with me is Hannah Kwan and her husband Jason Krup, also, we have Eric Zacherson as the project architect, um, Madam Chair, we can jump down to slide five, that's probably a good place to start, uh, our proposal involves a demolition of an existing, uh, two-family structure, and we are proposing to replace that now with a five-unit structure with five garage parking spaces, um, we were before the board, and we did request a deferral, uh, previously, uh, based upon the BPDA's recommendation and an opportunity, took an opportunity to try to address a number of those comments, uh, as stated, this is now a five-unit proposal, I know the public noticed it's six, we did reduce that to five, uh, with five parking spaces, uh, if we can jump down, uh, perhaps to slide eight, it'll give us a little bit different perspective as well. Uh, it's a good place to stop, so our building is here on the right-hand side next to the, uh, blue, uh, looks like about a three-and-a-half-story building, uh, and that would be demolished, it does sit on a five-thousand-square-foot site, which is currently, uh, situated in the two-F-two-thousand zoning district, um, under current zoning, Madam Chair, this lot could conceivably be subdivided, and, uh, two two-unit dwellings could be, uh, constructed as a matter of right, uh, however, I think it's important for context, including the past recommendations of the BPDA, to consider, uh, new zoning that is likely to be implemented for this area, uh, this site, if we want to jump to the next slide, uh, for rendering, sure, perfect, uh, so this site, uh, is being, um, uh, targeted for what we call EBR two, uh, which would allow for a number of different zoning regulations that currently exist here in the two-F-two-thousand, uh, right now, under Article fifty-three, uh, the FAR for this site, uh, would be in excess of the allowable limit, which is, uh, one-point-oh, uh, we're proposing one-point-four-three, require variance for that, in addition, the design of, uh, of buildings in the two-F-two-thousand district, uh, would be two-and-a-half stories, uh, there are a number of examples of three and taller buildings in this section in East Boston, but I think it's significant that EBR two, uh, will allow for a three-story building under new zoning, uh, more importantly, EBR two will not have an FAR requirement, rather, uh, it looks to issues like permeable surfaces and more open space, uh, and that's precisely what we did, Madam Chair, when we addressed the comments and concerns of the BPDA, uh, since the last deferral, if we want to jump down to the site plan, um, at slide eleven, that probably would be helpful, uh, to talk about that, um, so as we're going to that, uh, we can see the layout of the building here, we do set the building back about a little over twenty-one feet in the rear yard, and that is an increase from the original proposal, uh, by doing that, uh, and looking at our overall site plan, our permeable space on the site is at about thirty-seven percent, I believe under new zoning, the goal is to be at least thirty percent, so we are in excess of what the minimum requirement would be for permeable surface, uh, more importantly, we ensured that we kept the parking in the garage, so that we did have additional pavement in the rear, uh, there was an opportunity to try to create some parking in the back of the building, uh, and that was something that, uh, we certainly wanted to avoid in order to ensure as much permeable space as possible, uh, if we want to jump down to the next slide, please? Uh, this shows the, the first level, uh, with our parking garage, and again, one of the things that we did here in the original recommendation was, the six parking spaces were a little bit snug, uh, and did have some effect on maneuverability, I know that was originally cited, uh, by offering and changing this around to, uh, five parking spaces, we do checkerboard the garage, which is a, a method that we have used previously, uh, and the maneuverability based upon both compact-sized and regular-sized vehicles should be less of an issue, more importantly, uh, there is an existing curb cut on the site that is in excess of ten feet, we would be reducing that down to the residential width of ten feet as well, um, real quickly, I can jump through the floor plan, I was going to jump to slide thirteen, and I'll just talk quickly about those, so at level one, we do have the garage parking, uh, as well as an accessible unit, which is a two-bed, two-bath at grade, uh, we show, uh, four other units on the upper levels, and those are all family-sized, three-bed, two-bath units, uh, ranging anywhere from about eleven-hundred square feet up to around fourteen-hundred square feet, uh, the reason we incorporated the number of three-bedroom units is this particular neighborhood, uh, has been pretty sensitive to, uh, asking for family-sized units, uh, and we wanted to ensure that we were addressing those problems and concerns, so with the reduction, uh, down to five units, we did, uh, have the ability with some of the floor space, space to create, uh, some of that, um, additional space, last, I would point out, uh, for the flat roof, uh, we don't propose a roof deck, uh, that was something that was contemplated early on in the process, but we've eliminated that as well, um, I will pause there, I know that there may be some questions regarding, uh, the design layout, some of the changes, but, uh, we'll pause and, uh, ask if there are any questions from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Gilens, any questions from the board?
Is this a rental project, or?
This is intended for homeownership, so these would be, uh, individually sold as condos.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll take public testimony.
Malavia Gomes, from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Service, um, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, ONS Holst stood in a butters meeting for this project on February seventh, February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, on this call, a resident at seventy-nine Horace expressed concerns about the timeline of the project and about parking, two residents on the call expressed full support for the project, while another resident suggested that the project be four units and six parking spaces, and expressed concern that was coming from neighbors on Bennington Street about the height, uh, but overall, this resident liked the design, another abutter suggested that the height was fine and design was okay, uh, furthermore, the applicant met with Harborview Neighborhood Association in May, the group voted to oppose the project with a vote of twenty-one to seven, ONS also received a packet of support with twenty-eight letters of support- ONS also received a packet of support with twenty-eight letters of support from a butters and neighbors that was forwarded to the board. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Power from Councilor Coletta's office. And so there is lack of support, eh, from Harborview and neighborhood association with their vote in opposition to this project. Additionally, we have received numerous, eh, emails from people in the community and a butters in opposed to this proj, in opposition to this project. And lastly, the project does not seem to be in conjunction with the Plannis Boston proposals that are putting, eh, forward. Eh, so for all of these reasons, the council would like to go in opposition of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other elected officials? Um, if not, I'll go to Robert and then Brian. Can you state your name and address and briefly tell us if you are in support or opposition?
Yes, hi. Um, my name is Robert Adams. I am, uh, director of butter. I am at seventy Horace Street. Um, I am opposed to this project, uh, primarily because as a member of the Harborview group, we did vote no for this project. We have concerns about the overall height. And many of us in this community have been working very hard with the BPDA about Plan East Boston. And so the maps that are currently being drawn are saying that a project like this would be too high. And so we do feel that'd be the case, and many of us are concerned that, you know, if we continue forward with this, we're still committing the sins of the past, and we would like with the Plan East Boston to try to prevent those from happening. And this is just something that we are just opposed to, primarily on the height base. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Michelle? I'm sorry, Brian?
Hi, I'm Brian Chilton. I, um, own the property directly behind this at, uh, five nine five Bennington. And, um, we're, we're landlords and we take great pains to, um, not over-populate our units. We take less rent because we try to be good neighbors. And so this kind of flies in the face of what our efforts are in the sense of, uh, increased density in the area. Um, as far as requiring variances, I have some experience with this. I don't understand why the property would be considered for variance based on my understanding of what the requirements are for that. Um, and I echo Mr. Adams', uh, previous comments that it's a, I think, a terrible precedent for Horace Street moving from two-family development to, um, five, because you're just gonna find developers, you know, buying multiple properties and combining them into increased density. Um, thank you.
Okay, Michelle?
Hi, I'm Michelle. Um, I live at seventy-eight Horace Street. I'm a director of butter for this, this project, and I'm in complete support of it for multiple reasons. One being that I'm a lifelong East Boston resident and I love the, you know, the change that East Boston is going through, and I think that this is well-planned out. I think that the parking isn't gonna be an issue. I love that, you know, we have them in the building. Um, I think that building at this very moment is an eyesore, and I think that just by putting, you know, developing this project, the value of the street in general is going to absolutely go up. Um, I'm not concerned about the height. I don't think it's going to, you know, ruin anyone's view. There's, our, our houses are very spaced out as it is. And, um, going forward, I'd love to see this, this happen to East Boston and particularly Horace. It's a beautiful street to begin with, and I'd love for something like that to go up. I think it's, it's great. Absolutely.
Thanks. Er, Renani?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Renani DeRusio at sixty-eight A to sixty-eight B, Horace Street. Also direct butters to the, uh, project. Uh, very much in support of this project. Um, as, as you know, our neighborhood, our community is in desperate need of new homes. Um, this is appropriate for a five-thousand-square-foot lot. Uh, we supported, uh, six new homes for families. Uh, I think the scenes of developers, uh, brought down to five, but still very much in support of that. Um, we have, uh, tenants on our first floor looking to purchase a home, impossible in our community. Uh, we have other friends and family looking to rent, also impossible in our community, uh, because of lack of supply. Uh, we could have five new homes for families, uh, you know, online this time next year. Uh, also, uh, very much consistent with, uh, at least the comments and feedback we've had uh, for, for Plan East Boston, uh, for this specific area of East Boston. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Nicholas?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Nicholas Parsigen, one twenty-one Harv Street, East Boston. I'm in support of the project in a time where there's a desperate need for additional housing stock in the city. I think this is a well-designed and thoughtful approach to adding additional units of housing, and I think it would be a great addition to the East Boston community. Thank you.
And then Colby, last raised hand.
Hi, I am Colby Maggiarala, fifteen Horace Street. And I support the project because it's not very dense by the amount of the size of the lot. And, um, it takes care of the parking, and the actual height is not out of line for the height of the other buildings.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, might, can I respond very briefly?
Yes, sir.
And, and it goes to the heart of, I believe, the vote of the association, the issue on height. Um, I, I don't want it to be confused on the board. The current height allowable in the district is thirty-five feet. The height issue, uh, under the current zoning is that two-and-a-half stories is permitted. This would be considered three-story, but thirty-five feet is still the maximum height limit. Um, with respect to Plannis Boston, uh, EBR two actually would allow three stories by right and would eliminate the requirement for FAR, uh, variance. So, uh, we are, and we attempted to align this project more with the Plannis Boston than the current Article fifty-three, which is, uh, in effect, I, I would assume until, uh, until the zoning commission decides on the new article. But we are heading in that direction. That's why we've designed the building the way we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this with BPDA Design Review and special attention to the parking and maneuverability.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And it looks like we are on break again until one o'clock. See you all then.